About five minutes. You ever could have been. She got something awesome.
I see that.
That's good.
Hey, tell me when you want to start it, Ash. We're still, still a few minutes before six thirty or five thirty.
We have five minutes, yes.
Okay.
John, everybody's here, so we might as well get started.
Okay. Um. This is the regular meeting in the Stewardess for Utilities. It's Thursday, April thirteenth. So let's call this meeting order. Let's do a roll call. Uh, Kim?
Here.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm here. Uh, Shirley?
Here.
And Craig?
Here.
Okay. Um. Let's, uh, first item here is to approve, uh, do the agenda approval, do the consent agenda. Uh, the bills are in there, so when you've all had it or satisfied with those, I'll entertain a motion for someone to, uh, to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Craig? For second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second by Brian. How do you vote, uh, Kim?
Yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Okay. Second item is Snyder and Associates, uh, the water main payment application for great planes. Um, uh, we need to approve that payment application. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by Kim? Is your second?
I'll second it.
Second by Shirley. How do you vote, Brian?
No.
Uh, I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Yes.
Um, is, uh, is Jeff there? Or is there somebody can do a project update for us?
No, he is not here.
He's not.
Okay. Uh, Pat, you have any comments?
Oh, about the project, uh, the water tower is waiting for a coat of paint right now. And, uh, I just heard today that they might be coming next week to paint it if the weather stays decent. As far as the water main, then they're getting pretty close, aren't they, to being?
Yeah.
Pretty much complete with that, but they still gotta go back and put in a lot of services.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's kind of where it is right now, that they have put water in some of the mains and pressure tested, things like that. So it's starting to move along a little faster, but it, uh, if we remember, I mean, they have this time next year to get it done, but they think they're gonna be done probably August, September. They're, they're gonna be, they're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Okay, uh, board members, any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to item number six. Nate Street Mark? Um, is Nate there tonight?
No.
Well, I think, um, Sarah asked if I, if we needed to put this on the agenda, and I told her just for a point of discussion, we talked at our last meeting and Craig brought up an excellent point about reviewing this video uh, for, to, to possibly put some items of infrastructure, you know, that the utilities are responsible for into that. I think that has a lot of benefit for, for development, which we can have some of that information in there. So, um, I think I'd like to have, and I, the board can, uh, can have. I'm getting some, so, um, but the, uh, you know, if you have any comment on that, I think it's an excellent idea for us to review that and have Nate look at it again and see if we, you know, work with, have him work with Pat and Ben and Dustin to see if there's some items of, of, uh, infrastructure that the utilities could be part of that video too. So, uh, I'm in favor of the video. I think it's a great idea, but Craig has a, has a great idea about entering that information too. So I think we need to, uh, get with Nate and check that out, so.
Is there, uh, this is Brian, and the council just, didn't, didn't they just put this in their urban or no plan to tip that expense? So there shouldn't be any burden to the utilities to, uh, improve it. I mean, we just, we just got done with a, uh, insurance expense that was, you know, a twenty-five, thirty percent increase. We've got some other things that have come in that are, you know, non-budgeted items. And to me, this isn't something we should have just put some money on if we're able to tip the expense. I agree, you know, include some, uh, some water and electric, uh, and marketing, but as far as just, you know, making this a lab in our budget for a perpetual, I would not be in favor of that under, you know, I guess.
So you're, you're suggesting, you're suggesting the city pay for all of it now?
Yeah, if we want to clip into their, on some content, I get that, but from an economic development perspective, to me, that lands on the city side.
Well, and I agree with that, Brian, and I'm okay with, with the city doing that if they, if they choose to do that. Uh, but we have a responsibility for development well. But I think if we're gonna do that, we need to have a, a portion of that to video talk about instead of the utility infrastructure as well.
I have, John, I have Matt from Quin to speak.
Kate? Go ahead, Matt.
Uh, yes, I would just like to say I, I think it would be a benefit to my department, though, if I could show that the utility was showing some support for some marketing. Uh, you know, anything small, but just if you could just show the candidacy that you're supporting my idea and supporting promoting the community. And we could work with trying to find something, uh, to add to the videos to get more of a benefit for the utility board or for the utility. But I would just like to, I think it'd just be a good idea to show that the utility is supporting the marketing and supporting the community and supporting my, my job. That's it, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
The utilities put on it, but like Brian said, we've been putting a lot of money out right now that wasn't budgeted, and I think we need to slow down on that.
So, so I guess when we're, when we're talking about, when we talk about support, Matt, that means rate increases to our customers because we're on the operating budget we already set. So, I mean, this is the fourth time this has been on the agenda. To me, I already, I guess I'd be at a point to make a motion to support the council's decision to use TIP on this to get utility co- uh, content in there, but not to expend revenue from the utilities for that. We don't have it.
And I'm kind of at the point too where, you know, if this keeps getting put on the agenda, you know, I'd love Nate to be here to actually be able to answer questions and for us to be able to have a discussion about what his plan was, how he thinks, you know, the utilities could benefit from that, you know, some things that, you know, points that I would like to discuss. I mean, you know, whether it relates to, previously, you know, we've had no issues, to my knowledge, fulfilling lots out of the new developments. So how do they think our supporting that is gonna help, you know, bring in for this new phase with the development out there, you know? Have, have we had any issues with that? What do we think the gain is gonna be from that, from a supporting people coming to Stewart and development? You know, existing businesses? The utility company is probably not gonna see a large benefit from that, but we are gonna see a benefit. But again, it's, it's talking those things over, talking about how he's gonna distribute this content, you know, those sort of things that, you know, I would want to have that discussion before I voted yes or no to spend the money that we don't have right now to spend.
How are we, uh, why don't we have Nate meet with Pat and Dustin and, and Ben? And have him bring a report to the, uh, to the fourth meeting next month?
But I thought we were doing that from last month to this month.
We've got questions about it, I don't think we can, uh, you know, and again, I'm fine with, with letting the city council do this. I really am. It's their, it's their encourage to do it, and I'm in favor of letting them do it.
But, but to, to your point, to Craig's point, I think it's critical that it gets a that benefits us, but we just don't have the, I mean, they've got hotel motel tax, they've got TIP levers to pull on. I mean, they've got a lot of different things that they can use, sales tax, whatever they want to do. We don't, we just don't have that.
Well, let the city do it then, that's fine.
And one point we can bring up is we did indirectly some marketing and development already by going out and purchasing all the electrical to do for downtown events. So we've put money into economic development this year, and will continue to grow upon that system as the years go around. I mean, what was that total, ten thousand?
Ten thousand, yeah.
About ten thousand, I mean, that's that entire marketing budget for the year, isn't it?
Yes.
So, I mean, we've put in that money to help with economic development, to drive more people here during events. We've got power for you, they're more likely to come out.
Yeah.
So we, we've definitely helped in that sense already.
Okay, we'll let the city take care of it.
What, what are we, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna let the city do this?
Yeah, the city is, is the, blah, blah, so getting it on the table.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do we need to vote here, Ash?
Uh, you can if you want to. I made a motion to support the city council for providing TIP to that project. Is there anybody gonna second that?
But if they, but if they would also, you know, clear that content with, with Pat, you know, I mean, just so we can get the library to be covered in that part too, you know, the, the library is not gonna contribute on your, to the, you know, cost, so.
Okay, we have a motion by, Brian building seconded by Kim to, uh, support the city council for, uh, buying for TIP for that project.
We'll, we'll proceed to vote. Uh, I vote aye. Uh, Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Kim?
Yeah.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay, item seven, DGR.
Go ahead.
All right, well, thanks for having me here this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you guys. System. Here to talk about, uh, I guess, the electric system study and capital improvements plan we put together. Uh, my name is Jared Lucy, uh, electrical engineer with DGR Engineering. Along with, uh, Andy Coop is, was helping on this project, and I helped him vice versa. He wasn't able to come due to some personal activities getting scheduled around, so, um, put it on me to, to carry on the discussion without him, and, uh, we can certainly loop him in on anything, uh, as we need to as well, uh, to answering questions you guys have. So, um, appreciate you again, uh, guys having me, and, uh, and Pat, thanks for your help, uh, putting together the materials and, I guess, giving us the data to, uh, put together the study, so. Guess I'll get started here. Um. So, uh, with DGR Engineering, you guys are familiar with us, and you guys have been great clients of ours. We really appreciate, uh, the opportunity to continue working with you guys. We've been around for a long time, seventy-one years, and, uh, I've been at DGR for twelve years. And Andy Coop, he's a little bit my senior, he's, uh, nineteen years at DGR, so. Scarily close to twenty years, which is, sounds big, and sounds like he's, he's getting old. I don't think I am, but he is. So anyway, our tasks for, for this project were to evaluate you guys' system based on load, based on projected load, uh, assess your, uh, age and condition of your, uh, cities, I guess, the, the communities or the, the municipal's internal system. So you guys have a sixty-nine KV transmission source from CIPCO. You have a source to the north and the south, from the south, and your two substations, uh, that you guys have in your, your town, enable you to distribute, the distribution through the north and the south portions of, of the community. So, wanted to look again, like I said, under, uh, existing peak conditions that have historically been seen, plus apply a projected load growth based on conversations with, uh, Pat and the staff, as well as just looking at, you know, average growth over the last few years. So, um, we're covering, uh, we're looking out with our load projection in about ten years. So, uh, a lot of things change in there, so beyond that is kind of really the crystal ball. It's a little too big to actually be accurate at that point. So we start at ten years and, and go from there, so. So, uh, looking at your system, we want to identify the deficiencies, any deficiencies we notice in terms of, uh, maintaining that quality service you guys are used to providing. We'll get to what those, that consists of. Identify those deficiencies, recommend improvements to take care of those, and then provide the cost estimates for your budgetary planning. Um, like I mentioned before, you have a sixty-nine KV transmission system that, uh, CIPCO owns and operates, and it feeds each of your substations, one to the north and to the south. Um, I'll start with the, the south substation, which built, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight. So it's twenty-five years old still, you know, relatively new in the utilities world. We'd like to see thirty to forty to fifty years of service, uh, if we can get it out of equipment, uh, at least the capital improvement, uh, equipment. Um, you have a, a seven MVA max rated transformer at the south sub, so that appears to be, you know, have the plenty of capacity for, uh, the time being. The north substation is kind of the, the older, um, I guess, I've heard it described as it's aged gracefully. It has, you haven't had any major issues with it. Um, we, we did a little bit of maintenance a few years ago when CIPCO went to the transition from six, uh, thirty-four, five to sixty-nine. They stepped up the voltage. So, uh, they inspected it, and it's still electrically sound, it just aging gracefully. So that's a, you know, right at forty-nine years old, hitting that fifty-year mark. So, uh, the, kind of look at that as something that might need to be addressed, and we'll discuss that a little bit, a little bit later. It is not quite rated as high as the south sub, and so right now it's maxed at four point two MVA. So a bit of a mismatch from your south sub. Um, and that, I should step back, that north, uh, substation transformer is only, it's rated at four point one six KV on the load side, load side. So, um, right here, if you can see my red dot, um, just kind of point out aerial image of, of the, the city here and, uh, where the existing power plant is located, kind of centrally in the north side of the railroad tracks. And the south sub is in the south part of town, obviously, just off of I eighty there. So just gives you an overall idea there, if you're not familiar already. Uh, and system, um, there are four underground circuits fed out of the south sub at twelve point four seven KV. And, uh, out of the power plant sub, you have five four point one six KV feeder circuits that feed they used to feed primarily the north side of town when you operated at the four point one six KV voltage. So, uh, as you guys know, in the last three years or so, you, uh, converted the north portion of town to twelve point five KV, a modern, more efficient, uh, updated voltage for the times. So plus you got all that stuff buried, and I, once, uh, Pat gets done wrecking everything out, it's gonna be, gonna be a really nice system that gets invested in there, so, um, uh, so no longer does the power plant in the north sub serve anything normally. It would just be in event of a, a backfeed situation. So it's one of those deals where when you, you're running two voltages for a community, um, at some point, you just convert the rest, it's a natural progression. You run into a jam where, uh, you used to have some backfeed capability, and now you guys are transitioning out of that to where, uh, you need additional twelve point five KV, uh, tied in to feed those circuits. So we'll get in a little bit, uh, to that in a little bit here, but, um, basically, the, the four point one six KV switchgear in the power plant is, uh, you know, it's on its road to, uh, retirement. So it's, uh, we'll get into a little bit of the aging condition issues there, but, um, it's just a natural progression with converting a town, you know, to, to twelve point four seven, so. Here's another map, um. The north power plant feeds the underground distribution, or it used to feed, but it's located to where it would feed the north distribution equipment, and the south sub basically takes care of everything, uh, in the whole town today. So, um, really, that's just a repeat on the right there, so I'll just keep, keep going here. Any questions on your existing system at this time? Okay. Um, here's a one-line schematic of, of how things lay out. Uh, you mentioned your, uh, sixty-nine KV source from CIPCO feeds that, that, uh, power plant sub, and then, uh, the south sub is fed from CIPCO's, uh, from the west, southwest, uh, CIPCO system there. And, of course, you have, uh, generation connected into that south substation as well. Four point three, uh, megawatt of, uh, diesel generation capacity. So that currently covers your, your existing system peak, which was three point six as recent as this year. You guys set a new summer peak, uh, for, uh, demand on the system. So as I mentioned, uh, you, you guys set a new peak in, uh, I believe it was July this last year, it got real hot, and so uh, three point six megawatts is the new peak. And over the last, uh, we had data going back to about twenty sixteen, so we, uh, looked at that, and pretty steady growth. Um, I think we had it about two and a half percent growth average there, two and a quarter, two and a half percent, which is really healthy for a municipal the size of Stewart. A lot of communities, they go about stagnant, and then all of a sudden the load comes to town, and it kind of blows everything up. So, uh, yes, appear to be pretty steady here. Your winter peak is obviously lower, your summer peak, which is normal, um, for like municipal. What we did was applied about a two point seven percent, uh, summer peak projection, and really, we, we bumped up the, just ever so slightly, the average from the last five, six years. We bumped that up because while we're discussing about electric vehicles, um, there are, you know, published plans about, uh, I eighty being the corridor, so, um, that additional percent growth accounts for, uh, level three fast charger down there in the Iowa, or the interstate eighty corridor. So that's kind of what's bumping it above what, what we would generally just average out what the growth is and project it out. So that's why we're a little heavier there. Winter is about one point four percent, um, that's not really driving any of your capital improvements, so. So, yeah, we look out to about twenty thirty-two, and we'll see how things shake out, but that's kind of our basis for, uh, you know, planning for that, the capital improvements in the next ten years. So, uh, visiting with the staff and getting an idea of the, the area and where development, you know, load growth would be. You know, really, the key is, uh, a big driver is down there in the interstate eighty corridor. Um, there's some commercial area there by like, uh, you know, it'd be like Carville's, I think, is the dealership. And then you have a, you know, residential area, newer, that's kind of more prime for the residential growth. So, um, this is pretty typical, um, distribution of growth across the town. Your, your outer portions of town get, so that growth is the, the town grows. Overall, it equates to about, uh, a twelve hundred KW growth over the next ten years, which, um, which is, seems pretty healthy. And, uh, you know, depending on how things shake out with the EVs and, you know, whatever else is coming down the line, really will dictate, you know, how this plan gets, gets established, so. Looking at our design criteria a little bit, um, one of the key things we want to see is that reliability, the redundancy, where it's an N minus one. So scenario, minus one piece of equipment, uh, municipals need to be able to backfeed that component, to reduce and minimize, if not eliminate, any sustained outage for the community. So, uh, that goes for the transmission distribution and the substation facilities. Want to maintain a ANSI class A which allows for a three and a half volt drop on the primary distribution system, uh, that, I'll show you a chart here to make a little bit more sense of it, but really, our analysis is relegated to this, uh, primary portion. So this shows, uh, this, the voltage leaving the substation at a one hundred and twenty-six volt base. Um, the primary distribution system needs to be very, uh, efficient to allow for all the different drop that happens between the transformer and the house. So there's not a great idea of what that is, and so the ANSI class A is kind of a proven methodology that we've used allowing full drop on the primary system. Basically ensures if you, if you maintain that voltage, you're not gonna have issues in the secondary level. So it's not, uh, that's just a very, um, basic way that we look at voltage quality. The, and that voltage essentially, it comes down to brownouts, and, um, you know, if you have sensitive motor loads, sometimes factories have VFDs at kickoff under low voltage conditions. So, um, really, if you stick to that ANSI class A voltage level, you don't really have any issues across the system, so. And then to round out our criteria, um, thermal capacity of cable, so limiting heat damage to equipment, transformers, cables, switches, uh, elbows, um, we don't want to run that stuff beyond its capacity. And then, security four and five are more, uh, flexibility, um, allowing the efficient transfer of the power across town. Given the, the utility staff, the ability to backfeed things without having to really mess up a lot of the configuration, and then also being able to expand, uh, when a new load comes to town, you need to have a little bit of headroom to allow for some growth without having massive capital infrastructure improvements right out of the gate. We utilize, uh, Milsoft windmill software to model the, uh, electric components of the system and, uh, put our spot loads everywhere and allocate load and run our analysis that way. Looks at voltage, it looks at, um, thermal capacity and the power's ability to switch between components in different scenarios. So into the analysis, I'll try to get through this fairly quick. Really, you know, it comes down to, uh, your existing system today, it's just fine. So when you don't have any components, you don't have any, uh, s- switches that are out of service, or, you know, big ends or anything like that, system intact, you can, you know, feed the town just fine. So there's no immediate, um, issues today serving load. And then what you'll notice is basically, in general, the, uh, low voltage is indicated by the red, overload is green, and then acceptable is black, so just kind of an F out here. Now, once we apply the twenty thirty-two loads, where you have that, you know, fairly healthy growth, um, that's where we run into, uh, feeding kind of the peripheral areas of town, um, from the south sub. Being that at the north sub, there aren't any of the distribution feeders that are able to be utilized on the forty-one six, uh, level. Twelve-five being sourced in the north and east portion of town, where you, you're gonna have some of that load growth, we, we begin to see some voltage, uh, drop exceeding that three and a half volt criterion. So system intact, just add a new load. So every day, um, in, you know, it'd be a So every day, you know, it'd be a peak load situation, but at that time, then you'd start to have some concerns. And really, once you start, you know, going with, let's say you lose a feeder breaker or you lose it, there's a cable mainline that's damaged or something happens, a switch or a sectionalizing cabinet goes. If you lose your North Circuit under existing loads today, you have the, you have, it's quite possible you would see some voltage drop issues. Your voltage quality would suffer in the northern part of town if you lost that North Circuit. Because right now, I mean, the South Sub feeds the town with about four circuits that are kind of evenly balanced. And when you lose one of them and you only have three circuits and you're trying to feed the North part of town, that's where that North source is really, I would consider to be important part of your guys' plan. So you're going to see that with, just kind of get worse as you apply that load. So really, it all comes down to just a function of distance and then a function of some of the circuitry in the south part of town. Wasn't built out with four OT mainline circuitry, it was one OT cable. And so it really kind of hamstrings our capacity to feed the North part of town. So when the North part of town was converted, it was made sure there was a four OT mainline backbone. So you'll notice that, once we do run the models, the North part of town, if you have a source up there and you're able to feed it from the South via different cabling, voltage conditions do improve. So as you can see, it's a pretty good footprint there, exceeds that 3.5 volt criteria. And then, so one of the things going on here is, so you have the existing power plant switchgear in the power plant sub. So one of the things that needs to get done yet, part of this process of, you know, converting to 12.5 entirely, but the tie needs to be reestablished between the North Substation Transformer and that switchgear to the switches that are set up right outside of the plant. That needs to get finished. And so assumes that that plant ties in place. So a few things going on there, I'll touch briefly, is that power plant switchgear, very old and it needs some serious cleaning to make sure that it's electrically sound. And so about $10,000, you can have a switchgear shop come out. They'll clean it out, test it, make sure it's sound, make sure it can work, and get some cable connected to the tie transformer and you have a backfeed for the South Sub. So the issue is, is basically under existing loads because of the limited capacity there at the North Sub. You do run into some voltage concerns when you have to feed that future, well, you gotta feed anything down south of the interstate there. With that tie in place, there is some voltage drop concern. So again, that just, it shows us that you have a backup. Once that tie gets established, and that's not an expensive endeavor. I was talking to Pat about it, really pretty simple to get that. The issue with that is that power plant switchgear, I'll show you some pictures, is elevated about 10 feet in the air. It's very hard to service, it's very hard to operate. So a big issue there is it's not as easy as it sounds, just hooking up the cable. So that, that's kind of why it hasn't been done yet. We've had to kind of formulate a plan there. So moving along with the loss of the South, the 2032 loads, yeah, you do have some voltage drop issues. And really, it comes down to where all that one OT mainline is today. That really is the concern. And there's some other operational things in terms of switching that the fused elbows don't give you that, you know, when you put in the four OT backbone, the switches, it's very operationally sound to transfer load. So there's some nuances there and I'd be happy to answer any of those questions here. But any questions at this point, looking at the maps? Did you want to look at any of them in more depth? Any other questions? So looking at the deficiencies, the way we went about this is look at age and condition right out of the gate. We look at that, when you buy a new power transformer, 20 to 30 years. Well, historically, we've been able to squeeze 30 to 40 to 50. As we have here with, all kind of depends on the abuse that it sees. So if you don't have a lot of faults on your transformer, the windings and everything isn't as damaged as they otherwise would be with, you know, as it could be, you know, multiple situations. They'll tell you 20 to 30 years for a new transformer. And we think 30 to 40 is better. And I think that's more reasonable, especially if you maintain that N minus one, that backup. Then you can afford to run each of them maybe a little longer because you're going to stay up on testing, you're going to keep an eye on them. So at least you're able to back up one and once the aged ones do get, you know, down the road a little bit. And then of course, voltage drop and thermal capacity, like we had mentioned. But then also making sure you have those backfeed ties that you can, you know, without a huge shakeup of the system, you can backfeed things, people back on power. So listed deficiencies here, I'll kind of hit the high points. But as we discussed, you know, loss of the North Circuit out of the South Sub, we run into voltage issues on the North part of town. Those issues become worse when you apply load to that, the load growth that we're talking about in the next 10 years. So currently today, with the power point, the power point, the power plant tie in place, it's not today, but it will be soon. You can't handle the future load growth. You can today handle the existing load you have today. You might see some low voltage. So that's the concern. And then looking out 10 years, that just gets a little bit worse. You just add more load to voltage that could be better. So in a nutshell, that's kind of the distribution system. You know, really, like I mentioned, the south part of town, if it's up today, we would definitely put in more four OT mainline. Relegate the one OT for the subloops that could be sectionalized off the mainline. So if you have a problem, pop that all the way to the substation. You know, it would sectionalize that portion of that subloop. So I said, there's some sectionalizing, switching things that go along with that. But primarily, we're looking at capacity and voltage here. So you're going to see here in our improvements that are recommended to, you know, add some four OT mainline in. And some of it depends on what path you guys take here. And that's why I'm really interested in your guys' feedback to kind of, you know, provide any questions and stuff that you have that we can maybe flush out more if we want to. And then of course, when you put in the four OT, you add tie points to transfer the load to backfeed the equipment out of the system. So to touch on the substation side of things, the North Substation, like I mentioned, it's about 50 years old. So if that was your guys' only transformer, I'd say you really need to get it replaced today. Even if that's the case, transformers are about three years out. So by the time you bid something and get it awarded, you're looking at two to three years minimum. So that's kind of, with these planning studies now, we're really pushing, okay, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right away. Because frankly, with the infrastructure money that is going to be flowing here, the inflation on that is probably going to increase. So I wish I had good news about, you know, the materials market settling down, but there's just no, there's no indication of that. When we talk to suppliers, it's basically the same thing that we hear. Anyway, it was built in the 70s, made a good run. The existing switchgear in the power plant, again, you're looking at 40 to 50 years old. It's got electromechanical relays in it. They need to be tested before that stuff is energized and utilized. And really, the situation where ideally, it looks like the South Sub, right? You have a control building, climate control, nice switchgear lineup with a gen, you know, interconnection ability. You can access it from all angles. You can get folks in there. There's a real problem with the power plant maintaining that switchgear bus up there. If you're up there, you gotta be tied off. And if there is some sort of like an arc flash event or if there's a fault and there's a blast, you're going over the edge of the deck up there. So again, critical that, that's why it's something that you'd probably need to have a contractor come in and do bringing that tie into that transformer there to do that. So I'll show you some pictures here in a minute. But really, that's the North Substation. It's reached the end of its useful life. We need to plan on what's the next step. Here's an overhead aerial of it. Part of this is, as we looked at, how can we fix this site to bypass the old power plant switchgear? Utilize the North Source. Really, there's just not enough space and we don't have the state initially. I was asking Pat if we could develop any of this here. You got this academy, dance academy here right in between the power plant and the substation. That's not ideal because when you're operating breakers in the power plant, you can't see if there's a problem. So if that transformer starts, you know, two-way radios and guys out in the street, you know, signaling or whatever. So that's not ideal. There isn't, we looked at if we could put a tie transformer here with a switchgear lineup and with the water line there and the existing overhead transmission lines coming in over the top, there's really no way to get a switchgear in that location. The costs are just going to outweigh the benefits at that point. So we did look at that and it's just a super tiny site. And that being said, if, when you do expand that transformer and you need a bigger transformer to handle the load, it's difficult to handle that transformer. So here's a view of the Level 1 of the power plant switchgear. This is where the controls are located. You can see the deck above. They did it to save space, you know, when they built these gen plants, they had a lot of vertical clearance. And so really, you're operating here, the switchgear's 10 feet above you, right up there. So ideally, this is all on one level, it's all one part of nice switchgear. That's just what everybody's doing these days. So personnel safety, et cetera. So no, the South Substation, really, there's no deficiencies there. It's been converted to 69 KV with the CIPCO upgrade here a few years ago. It's a nice metal flat switchgear lineup, it's got two generators connected. So there's really nothing to do there other than just stay on top of it with maintenance and, you know, routine inspection. So that being said, your guys' main vulnerability right now is loss of the South Substation switchgear bus. So if you were to lose the switchgear bus, it would, you would not be able to backfeed the town with your generation because it goes through that switchgear. So that's your, that's your point right now where, let's move forward. Our plant, switchgear, connected for a low cost, you know, really, engineering isn't much there. But mainly getting the contractor in, service the power plant here. And that'll at least get us to where we can backfeed the South Sub switchgear bus. It ain't going to be pretty, there's going to be some low voltage, but it's better than no voltage. And that needs to be established in the next year, I would say, just to kind of bridge the gap here to, you know, until we get some more, some more capital improvements here as we're able to look at. On the generation side, you know, right now, you've got 4.3 meg of generation in its, the two gen units down at the South Sub. That is plenty for your peak today. And about, we noticed if the loads grow like we expect them to in the 28, 29 timeframe is when your guys' system peak will kind of surpass your backup generation capability. So that's kind of noted as a threshold there. It's kind of driving some of the timing of our improvements that we're going to be recommending here. The generators in the power plant today, was visiting with Pat earlier. And long story short, they need some DSHAP catalyst upgrades in order to be considered a generation asset. You could black start them and run them if you lost the town. However, you need the power plant tie to do it. So again, we'll finish the loop there. But really, without massive, you know, emissions control upgrades, basically EPA requirements, those gems have again exceeded their useful life in terms of where the additional investment kind of outweighs the benefits there. So really, and long story short, we're looking at maintaining that North Source, improving that in the next 10 years. And that's kind of the next big capital improvement that we see is needed for your guys' system. So again, recommended improvements, I don't need to beat this horse too much here. But we're going to, the goal of these improvements are to eliminate the deficiencies we can see with those projected loads. It's good to just, as long as you're planning for it, you're being proactive, okay? Whether you pull the trigger or not, timing. And of course, financials is the key here and we'll address that, not today, but you know, after we get your feedback here and get kind of the path forward. These improvements basically cover, I would say, the bare minimum to give us, to maintain that quality, power quality you have over the last 10, 20 years here. So so Phase 1, we have pegged for the next three years really, because it's a two to three year process for power transformers. But we've kind of envisioned it as a new North Substation. So where that is, I'm going to show you a map here. We don't need to have it here, somewhere within about a half mile of the existing transmission line, just to limit the transmission improvements that are needed. And on the north side of the tracks is kind of a natural delineation where railroad's difficult to get stuff done with. And but it does kind of divide your system up nicely, just kind of on a load flow basis. So we really, we really see, put a lot of value in having that North Source from CIPCO. A lot of communities don't have it and they wish they did. And I'm guessing about 99% of them, if they could afford it, they would have a transmission line. And frankly, we tell utilities, they need to look at doing that if they don't have one today. So it's a great value, really provides a lot of flexibility and resilience for your guys' system. At the end of the day, your flags are kind of covering up that one, so I'll move over to this. But you know, we're looking at about a $5 million investment for a new North Sub. And that basically replicates what you have at the South Sub minus the generators. So you're looking at a, you know, a climate controlled building that's going to be very reliable over the next 40 to 50 years. This is the truth of it. So they ain't getting any cheaper and that timeframe, it used to be you could do this in about a year, year and a half if you needed to. Now it's three years and that's if you start designing soon. So it's really putting a burden on municipals to plan ahead. So you know, a great decision was to do a planning study so you have something ready, you know what kind of route to follow. So Phase 2, I would consider to be pretty important. I hesitated to put it in Phase 1 and more of an AB approach. But you know, it really, if you, it all depends on load, right? So Phase 2 improvements consist of some distribution mainline improvements in the south area of the system. I'll show you a map here of what we're talking about. But especially if you see that load growth in the I-80 corridor there, especially with the EV Level 3 charger, you know, you're talking about a 700 KW spot load that really is something that is difficult to deal with if you don't have four OT mainline and, you know, the transformer for it, frankly. So really, you know, I just staggered this right after the North Sub, just for planning purposes because of the three-year, you know, transformer lead time. Really, you know, I just staggered this right after the north sub, just for planning purposes because of the three-year, uh, you know, transformer lead time. With the distribution equipment, you know, cable is out a year, which is crazy. It used to be 12 weeks. You know, there's stock out there, but it's going to a lot of the big utilities that have blanket, uh, contracts with suppliers. So. Really, kind of the bare minimum mainline improvements here. We're not replacing all the mainlines into the south sub. That'd be awesome, but it's just not necessary if, if the north sub improvements are part of the picture. Now, if, if we decide to kind of abandon our north source, which we'd advise against, but hey, money is money. So I understand. Um, we would be looking at significantly more distribution upgrades from the south sub in order to accommodate, you know, the lack of the north sub, sort, north source. So. I hope I'm making sense there and I can elaborate on that. But, you know, about 1.3, 1.4 million for the distribution mainline. Upgrading the four-ot mainline and tying that into the, the other circuits on the north side of the system. Phase three is more of just, hey, this is planned in for, if you want to maintain, you get a great setup to where you can backfeed your town generation. You can handle the existing peaks. Uh, they're up, upgraded, uh, diesel generators. Phase three includes additional generation addition, whether that happens at south sub or a no, a future north sub, doesn't really matter. Just trying to maintain that. You know, about in 2028 is where that 4.3 megawatts is exceeded. And, uh, you'd be looking at either adding a cat in a box generator like you have down there, or, you know, thinking outside the box, doing a study, seeing if a, 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 a generation building makes more sense. All that stuff would require, you know, costing out in detail and looking at the, the site availability that you have. You got quite a bit of site down there at the south sub. So. Maybe that's more of a natural fit, but, um, really, that's what phase three looks like. And that's at the end of the 10-year cycle, if loads progress, all driven by loads, of course, on this side of it. So. Now, to kind of point out where this would be, I hope you guys can see this okay, but really, uh, I just plugged in up here. Pat and I were kind of just pot shotting. There's a vacant lot or near vacant or available land somewhere, um, within about a half mile uh, of, of the existing transmission line. So again, just kind of, it's right next to some good mainline circuitry. So pretty minimal, uh, distribution. Get it interconnected to get your three circuits. Um, really, actually this, when Pat brought it up, this is about ideal. Uh, for what you guys can do there for a north sub location.
I won't take credit for that. It was Sarah's idea.
Wasn't me. That's all I know. It wasn't my idea. So, um. Uh, and then additionally, that phase two, the distribution improvements, like again, I've got a larger map here, but really, um, we're trying to get better load distribution interconnected to the north area of town. You know, you got a four-ot mainline here. We would be adding four-ot mainline here down to I-80. And then connecting into this existing four-ot tie that's part of that tie circuit to the, uh, power plant sub. So. Really pretty, I hate to say modest, because a million bucks is a million bucks, but in terms of mainline distribution improvements, just the bare minimum there is what we're recommending. But you're, you're maintaining your voltage. You're not overloading anything. So those are the goals when we identify those deficiencies. So. Um, really, uh, you know, phase two is right in there with phase one as being important. You can't do everything at the same time. So. On a one-line schematic basis, this is what this looks like. Um, essentially, here's your, uh, power plant tie that, uh, needs to be kind of finalized. Be a pretty quick project there, um, to tie that back in. And then you do have your backup tie up to 4.2, uh, KVA. And then of course, 28, 29, you exceed the 4.3 timeframe, uh, load level. And then, then your north, uh, substation transformer isn't adequate at that point. So. Um, phase one, we do, you know, we just have basically the, like the south substation, really modern municipal substation design. So, uh, anything you build in the north sub needs to have the ability to interconnect generation just to keep your options open. But again, that depends on the property that's available. And then again, the aerial, kind of poor information of the same, but, um, here you're gonna see the transmission that needs to be added. It's, uh, just kind of right north of the existing north sub. About a half mile is all you need to have. And, and that appears like it shouldn't be too bad. And so those costs are included in that $5 million figure. Overall, you're looking at about, you know, 90.8 million in the next 10 years or so. So just to get those improvements. So really, it's driven by load. The forecast is crystal ball. A lot of things could go either way. If this EV thing really happens, you know, we're skeptical. Our part of the world, it still gets really cold in the winter and they don't work well in the wintertime. So, or the, the EVs don't. So. And then if that technology advances to where it does better, then you're probably gonna see, you know, more EV penetration. And this doesn't really even consider, uh, all the residential services that could go. And, and, and that really is gonna come down. Just kind of off the cuff here, agreement between consumers and just an education campaign of what residential EVs do to your distribution system. So, for example, you put one EV vehicle charging in your garage, you're doubling the demand for your house with one vehicle if you plug it in at the wrong time. So, five o'clock in the summer, everybody comes home from work, plugs in their EV, fires up the microwave. So, and that's gonna be something that we'll see how it goes. Really like today that's happening, but kind of gets overlooked because I actually think, uh, it's more feasible that it would come on the residential side first versus, uh, long haul travelers on the interstate. Just kind of physics basis, uh, level three chargers are not efficient. Um, and they're a spot load. They're difficult to, to deal with on the, I mean, the, the side thing. So. Kind of just interjecting my opinion there, but. Next steps really, um, you know, after we, we kind of fine tune this, uh, look at anything you want us to here. Um, next step is electric rate analysis. Blair, he does this for our firm and he's worked with Stuart. He's got up-to-date numbers. So. Really, it's just getting these numbers firm after we make any adjustments that, that you guys want to see. So, um. Finance is key and without a plan, you can't do anything. So that's number one. Um, I would say if, if we're serious about doing a substation within the next three years, start looking at a site. Start trying to find a location that's gonna work. We may have, may have found one. I don't know. Um, but that's kind of the first thing before any money's really spent. Looking at what our availability is. Cause that will impact costs a little bit. We made some assumptions here. Um, and then like I said before, uh, power transformers are really a long lead item and it's not gonna get any better. So, uh, about, you got about 1.2, 1.3 million assumed for just a transformer here. Slightly bigger transformer than the south sub, just because it makes no sense to go incrementally smaller when the cost isn't gonna be that different. But you're looking at at least a million bucks. And, uh, I'm comfortable saying that about four years ago, it was half that. So, at least half that. So. It's just, it's crazy. We're, I'm still shocked. I, you know, I come to work every day and I'm just like, this is craziness, you know? This has got to change, but it is what it is. And I wish I had better news on that front. So. That being said, any questions? I know you probably have some and I'd be glad to try to answer any of them.
Jared, do you, uh, you mentioned it briefly, but do you anticipate any, uh, any infrastructure money coming?
You know, we've seen.
Then we do, then we do what, what we're suggesting here?
So a lot of what we've seen so far has been, the answer is yes, but it all depends. So what we've seen a lot of are these grants that are focused on innovation, doing things that frankly Stuart doesn't really need. It would be just spending money to spend money. So. Uh, for example, I mean, S- S- SCADA, you know, if you wanted to put in a whole new SCADA system and run fiber to all your subs and get some distribution automation, you know, there are some grants out there for that. Just doesn't, I'm gonna say yes, there is some, and I foresee some more coming because all these bills got approved. There's a ton of money out there. So we're still learning about it and we're gonna keep our ears peeled for anything that comes through across our desk. And it's just gonna be a learning, a learning curve for us. Cause there's, is a lot of money that's being spent. Uh, we just got to figure out a way to get it. So it's definitely a, a lot of it I've seen is 50/50. So if you wanted to put in like a, you know, automatic switching is basically what it is. Is if you sense a fault here, it automatically feeds, backfeeds, you know, basically, uh, a closed loop system, um, high-tech, pretty pricey. You're talking a hundred grand a switch. So there's money for that right now that we're aware of. So, um. It's kind of, some jujitsu could be to, to get in, qualified for that stuff. And we're still, we have a few grants out there that we're helping clients, uh, try to acquire. Don't really know what we're doing yet and we're learning and it's, it's a big focus of ours though. So. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think the other question I would have is along those same lines. Um, and I mentioned this to both Pat and Ash, that I think there's some, I think the, uh, state DOT may have some, some grant applications coming out for, uh, EV hookups along the interstate too. Have you heard anything about that?
Actually, I, I think Pat might have some good information on that. Look like there's some opportunity there. Um, so if you guys are interested in kind of being on the forefront of that, putting EV infrastructure out there, I'm sure there's ways to get that paid for. I can almost assure you that. Cause that's really a, it seems like that's really a focal point of, you know, transportation electrification is really a focus of, of the political world right now. So I'm assuming there's gonna be money to get EV chargers and stuff out there. The question is.
Well, I, I got the idea they were really interested in, in doing that with, you know, municipalities along Interstate 8, you know?
Right. Yeah. Cause they saw some weak points, right? Or they saw some spots that weren't addressed yet with the EV. Yeah, that's something we could certainly, I know, like I said, Pat forwarded me some of that information. Uh, I think like Stuart Anderson with the DOT was on one of those calls and I wasn't able to sit in on that. Yeah, we can sit in and kind of fill that out with you guys as, you know. Especially if you get in a situation where they're like basically saying, hey, you gotta furnish a transformer for this EV setup. Well, that is also a year out and it's also
Yep.
50 to 75,000 dollars depending on, you know? Cause, cause really the level three charger is basically 600 KW or, or greater. So you put in a 750 KVA transformer, which.
Well, before we're gonna do that, we would have to probably reconfigure our infrastructure on the south side there, you know, where, where the, uh, car dealership is and the, and the convenience stores. We're probably gonna have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're probably gonna have to do some, uh, do some new, you know, some new, uh, infrastructure out there, aren't we not?
Yeah, definitely. And some of that was part of what we just went over in this plan where we would have to increase wire size out there basically. And just, uh, pretty much increase transformer size out there. And we're talking about putting in 750 KVA transformers, which are going to two years out. Nobody has one hand. And we're also looking at about 50 to 60,000 for each one of them at this point.
In this study, you know, our analysis, we did, we did have one level three charger. Cause some of we got started when we were doing this and we're like, okay, let's just see what happens. We put one there. You guys by and large can handle that in existing system intact situation. Basically just upgrading the transformer like Pat said. However, you get into a situation where if you gotta feed it from the north or you are shorthanded on some circuitry out there, cause you know, X, Y, Z issue. Um, then you, you could see some issues and that's where the, the four-ot mainline is really needed to transfer load across the system. That's just the way it is.
Yeah. Hey. Um, board members, any comments or questions?
Wish I would have written down some of these numbers, but you know, you laid out that this is a 10-year improvement plan that'll basically get us up to being able to handle where our load expectations are in 10 years. So what you're saying is we get up to seven years from now and we're basically gonna have to restart this process to go, now we need to make more capital improvements to get to the new 10-year or 15, 20-year projection out there if we start seeing we're hitting those numbers. That's kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, essentially, I'm in favor of like every, they're gonna know when new stuff comes on. And a lot of times like, hey, you know, look at this or, uh, look, look at the loads every three, four years. And if it's not coming on, you just push stuff out more. Okay? We always start with precedent with kind of the N minus one stuff. We want that redundancy and then get the redundancy first, then worry about, okay, our, our voltage could be better. And so that's kind of why, um, you see the distribution improvements coming after. So really, yeah, I mean, the idea is that this builds in some additional capacity. It's gonna inherently have more headroom. But you're covered for at least, it's kind of the minimum you're covered for. And there's, you know, every five years, take another snapshot at it. You have a model. Takes very minimal effort. You just, you run the model a little bit. You don't need to do a full study. This just kind of sets the basis where you guys can plan financially. But to your point, totally load driven, um, just keep an eye, eye on the load. Now if you get two of those level three chargers and people start using them, you're gonna start seeing a little bit of heat going on with the cables, I would suspect. So. Like I said, minus one, and then as the load comes on, we'll see how it goes. See kind of a wild ride the, EV world makes us go on here in the next 10 years. But.
Jared, and tell me if I'm being naive here, but I'm looking under your, uh, your notes here on existing system deficiencies under generation. That, uh, that first item says existing generation capacity of 4.325 located at the south substation is expected to be exceeded by total system demand in the 2028 to 2029 timeframe. Does that mean if we didn't do anything, when we got to that point, uh, we would be exceeding our, um, we would be, or, or the demand would exceed what we can do, right?
Feed what you can backfeed with the generation. So if you lost, if you lost the T-line source into town, uh, you wouldn't be able to cover everything during.
We wouldn't be able to backfeed after that.
Yeah, it's kind of worst case scenario, really.
Right. No, I understand that.
But, uh, is, is that the most pressing thing? Certainly no. Just, you got good generation capacity now. If you want to maintain that same level of cushion, that's kind of where that comes into play. And again, driven by load. If loads get to 4.2, you know, 4.3 and they just sit there or whatever, you know, then it's not a big deal. So.
Yeah.
So something, you know, it's better to be armed with this information ahead of time. Then you can cash flow everything and, you know, really make it, you know, try to make it work the best way possible. So.
Well, I think we, uh, you know, this is, I think we all realize that eventually this kind of thing is, is gonna have to happen, but inflation is kicking us in the hind end here. And, uh, the, the timeframes it takes to get equipment is also kicking us in the rear end too. But, you know, we still have to, I think we still have to do some serious planning here. And, uh, you know, I think we gotta look at, at, uh, you know, whatever kind of grant money we can get out of this, or what kind of financing we can do to, to get this done. But, um. To get this done, but, you know, I think we need to, I think we need to. Here and, and at least begin to look at, at doing some of this just from a planning stand, standpoint right now. Because it, you know, if we, if we waited around, you know, five to seven years. And these, these projections either come in like they are or exceed. No, we're, we're not going to be able to do what we, what we've always done in the past, and that is backfeed the, backfeed the community, you know, so.
Yeah, and you guys have had really healthy growth without any E V stuff. You know, two and a half percent growth, that's, that's, that's better than many communities, and probably has a lot to do with the I eighty access, you know? So yeah, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't back down the projections, it just doesn't do you much good when you're planning, but yeah, it's, it's real growth you're seeing. And especially with hitting the peak last year like you did, so.
Yeah.
Now. Sorry, John, you want to say something?
No, we'll talk again, we'll talk again.
Uh, one of the points you keep mentioning is E Vs at the actual homes, are you talking, you know, some sort of fast charge level three there? Are you talking more E V chargers, more triple charge, overnight type charger?
Yeah, yeah, so like at the home, we'd be talking a level two, which is, it's a, well. Basically doubles your service, a lot of homes have hundred amperes that need to be upgraded. There's some, there's some things there need to be sorted out before people do this, but yeah, that would be a level two. I think it, it varies and the technology's changing, but. You're talking like an eight hour triple charge, and ideally you do that at night. And that's what that looks like, and, but that's again, just one of those, it's like, yeah, it's like doubling your demand if you do it at the wrong time. Now, if you do it only, you know, if you had like some kind of a user agreement where. You can hook this thing up and only plug it in at night, then you're just talking about something that's great for the electric system. Boosting that load factor for that home, so instead of you have the same, you know, capital improvements. You're just, you're just generating, you're getting energy usage where otherwise wouldn't be. So to me, I think there's opportunity there on the residential side. On the interstate and level three stuff they're pushing, very difficult to deal with, because that stuff is prime time during peak. They don't care, they, they want it now, and it's got to be fast, so I'm really, I'm kind of bullish on the residential thing. If they do it right, and they don't make everybody. You know, at rates today, E V works, when you double rates, doesn't work as good, then people are going to go back to the combustion engine and. Fill up with, you know, ten percent of.
Well, the worst case scenario on residential is they don't want their rate to increase, I think you're going to start seeing. A wind turbine show up in everybody's backyard, you know?
Yeah, it'll be interesting, that's what I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways this thing could go here, yeah, so. Like I said, if you could figure out a way to get, you know, to basically advertise residential E Vs, but just tell people, hey. We can give you a little rate cut overnight if you just, you know, whether it's like load control and load management switch or something that you have, like. R E Cs do with their water heaters and stuff, that's kind of the route I would take, and then you could actually generate quite a bit of revenue with it. I don't know. That'd be what I would do, but. Yeah, I don't know, we'll see how it goes, so a lot of, a lot of unknowns, we'll see, that, you know, we don't have the materials and the supply chain to just get transformers in two years. You know, they use, you know, they use steel and, and copper and everything for, for cars and vehicles, so. Yeah, there's a lot of challenges out there.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I think the board's going to have to do, along with staff, is going to have to do a lot of analysis here, but. This at least gets us in the loop here, Jared, and. About what we can, what we should be doing, so. I really appreciate the effort you put into this and, and the numbers that we've gotten here, so.
No, yeah, I appreciate, again, appreciate the opportunity, thanks for listening to me for an hour here, which is way longer.
You told me half of it.
I know. But you get, you're just, you're just working and, and you get to talk to people finally about it, and so you get kind of excited, so, and that's.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for.
Yeah, thanks a lot, and like I said, you know, we'll, we'll can work with.